Mr. Fox, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I'll rise, please.
I'm glad you lead this. I'm the United States of America and choose a republic for which stands one nation, one God, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Rhonda, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bruins?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Mayor Slowey?
Here. Thank you. Video statement, if you don't mind.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting replays Monday, June 26 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda is next. Does anybody have any items they would like to move around, pull, whatever? Or if not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
We have a motion of the approval of the agenda in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, stay in motion carries five zero. Presentations.
Presentation, the first presentation is the ceremonial swearing-in of Councilmember Albert J. Fox.
Great, thank you. So, our newest council member, Mr. Fox, missed his first meeting. But he did have a previously scheduled family vacation, so we cut him a little slack. For the record, Al was officially sworn in earlier, so this is more of a ceremonial swearing-in because he had to be sworn in to hear and attend the closed session. So, Mr. Fox, if you would join me down below at the podium, we'll get this show on the road. And for the family, if any of you want to take pictures, feel free to come up, get as close as you want. We're not gonna, we're not gonna worry. All right. So, I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Albert Fox.
Albert J. Fox.
Albert J. Fox.
Okay. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Thank you. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
And I will always follow the mayor's direction. Oh, sorry. Guess I added that one. So you will be officially our fifth council member, so congratulations. Ruth, if you would come up, we have a... We have tape across the hall there for those if you'd like to celebrate with us for Al being our newest council member. We'll get you back together in about ten minutes. Put us in recess. I apologize about the temperature in the room. Even though this is a new building, things occasionally go haywire, so we had a little problem with our air conditioning. So, we're taking off our coats up here. Feel free to do the same out there. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is the update on the Red, White, and Blue Parade to be held on June 24.
All right. Michelle, Saturday. You're gonna guarantee us a nice, cool day?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yeah. Let's all cross our fingers. Good evening, council and audience members. My name is Michelle Sario. I'm with the General Services Department. And we do have our annual Red, White, and Blue Parade coming up this Saturday, June 24. And it does begin at 9:00 a.m. on Sunrise Boulevard. Route is Uplands Way to Sunrise Mall parking lot. Come out and celebrate the patriotic spirit. And one of our items this year is we are doing a 20th Anniversary Float. So, I gave you guys a little bit of hints there as to what we're doing, but we don't want to give it completely away. So, there's been a committee that's been working on the float, and they've done a really good job. So, I think you guys will enjoy it on Saturday.
I'd be impressed if that was real snow.
Right? Right? And it didn't melt right away. Don't want to miss this year's parade again. We have the antique fire engines. We have the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band. We have the Capitol Pops, Fun Flows, Classic Cars, and Hot Rods. And then, of course, we have the pancake, ever-famous Pancake Brunch, sponsored by the Rotary Club of Citrus Heights. And the tickets are $5, and kids are $3. And it's a very, it's a very popular breakfast. We can have people literally calling just to ask if we are having the breakfast every year. So, it will be in a new location this year. It'll be just opposite end. It'll be near the announcer stand this year. And then, following the event, in the continuing heat of the day, Sunrise Mall and Sunrise Marketplace are having a summer, Sunrise Summer Kickoff Party. They're gonna have music. They have the NorCal Cruisers Car Show. They have a Kids' Own food trucks, and then, I know some food contests and prizes that they're doing. I know one of them is with Buffalo Wild Wings, and they're having a wing-eating contest, so.
Hey, super hot.
Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah. Always a thank you to our sponsors. They are what help make these events, help partner with the city in making these events so successful. So, Republic Services, Sunrise Marketplace, Sunrise Mall, 1019 The Wolf, and Hot 1035. So, thank you to them. So, please come out on Saturday at 9:00, before it gets way too hot, and enjoy the parade.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item's counsel by comments by council members and regional board updates. Al, I know for a fact you haven't been anywhere except on vacation, so we're not gonna talk to you. Jeannie, would you?
I have something to say.
Okay, Al, do you have anything to say?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
There you go. Okay. I will be more courteous, thank you, for my fellow council members for explaining that to me. Jeannie?
Okay, thank you. I missed my, was it, was the last meeting the one you covered for me, or anyway? I didn't go to a sanitation board meeting since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report there. On behalf of PAL, the Police Activities League, I'm happy to report that we had a very successful fundraiser. It was a trap shoot out at Rio Oso. And we raised several thousand dollars for PAL. Everybody had a great time. We had a non-sworn winning team, and then we had a sworn-winning team, most of whom are here tonight, I believe, and our staff, because I think the city manager was on that team, too. And so, and the kids had a BB gun shooting contest, so they all got to shoot at targets, too, and they had other games. So, it looks like we're gonna do this again next year. So, if you are a trap shooter, or know someone who is, stay tuned. And we'll announce a date later on, I'm sure. I also attend the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and Michelle pretty much covered the announcement I was gonna make. I just want to add to what she said about the summer kickoff party that the Sunrise Marketplace is hosting after the parade is, you know, in the Kids' Own, they have multiple bounce houses, they have lots of different features, they have a beer and wine garden, I believe. And so, it's a great way to cool off before it gets too hot, and then you can go home and take a dip in your pool. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Jeannie. Mr. Daniels?
Me?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, Brett.
Thank you. Let me take a moment to publicly thank the city manager and staff for opening up our community center during the heat spell. There's been a definite need for that kind of a thing. It's been horrible. And I think we're open through tomorrow, through tomorrow, again, noon to 7:00. And so, if anybody needs to get out of the heat, let them know that. While you're driving around, you see somebody that needs to get out of the heat, maybe let them know that. And hopefully, in the process, you know, we might even save somebody's life, actually. So, thank you very much for getting that done. I was contacted by a resident who lives in an area that borders some of the open fields on Sayonara, that are open fields now because we bought the lands and tore down the apartments. And he has a very high concern for fire. He says there's fire there every year, that the fields are mowed down usually, but they still result in fire. And I'm just wondering if there's some way that we can do maybe even a little bit more out there. I don't know if we could maybe contact the fire department to do some controlled burns or something like that, but if there's some way we can maybe get that down a little better, and maybe even be proactive in other areas, because it's horrible with the, with the great rains that we got. Now, we'll have, you know, horrible situations with fire, I think, too. And so, we're always proactive about things instead of reactive, and so, if maybe we could find a way to be proactive about that, I think it would help our residents a lot. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Steve?
Okay. Few items. I took advantage of the household waste drop-off on the 10th, and the next one will be October 14th, so if you get, start saving up your paint cans like I did. On the 12th, I did miss the RT meeting, but did see that the board approved reallocating 25 million in Prop 1A grant money from the capital improvement. They didn't have the matching funds to really use it, and so, it's being used for the proposed streetcar project, and they expect to replace this, this money with grants that do not require matching funds. And I think, even though I'm a little upset with the added gas tax, I think they're gonna see an influx of some funding towards transit, so that should help RT. On the 13th, attended the chamber lunch with everyone here on the council. I think, Jeannie, you were working?
I was elsewhere that day.
Did you get a chance to pop your head in to hear Chief Ron Lawrence speak?
Well, 'cause I was across the hall.
I know. I didn't know if you got a chance to?
Unfortunately not.
He was a much better speaker than the last chief. It was very, very good. Just kidding. And we also met the finance committee. Mayor Slowey and I met in the afternoon with the city manager and our directors to go over the budget. And then, yesterday, attended the Capitol Corridor meeting down at, in Oakland, at the Bard Headquarters, and that's an assignment from Regional Transit that I do. And if anybody needs tickets to the pancake breakfast at the parade, I'll have them. And I was given a few complimentary Connect cards for RT bus rides, and so, if you see me Saturday and want to buy some pancake tickets, I'll throw in a Connect card, too.
Great.
And that's all.
Thanks, Steve. So, just to piggyback off the Connect card, so the 15th, week ago today, they had their big press announcement on that. Connect card is essentially like a credit card where all the transit agencies from El Dorado to Placer to YOLO to, yeah, they're all connected. Because if you think about it now, if you're coming in from Placer County to downtown and you have to switch lines, the ticket that you have is only good on a Placer County bus. So, the Connect card, you can basically load it and just tap it and use it from, you know, all the different lines. It's taken a while to get off the ground, but it seems to be working well, so.
I won't say how much the cards are valued, but it's a fair amount.
You mentioned the Chamber Lunch, and Chief Lawrence did a very admirable job of speaking. On the 20th, earlier in the week, many of us up here attended the local American Legion meeting where they had the swearing-in of the new officers, so very active branch of the American Legion, so thank them. And then, the Secag Board Meeting again, nothing, nothing really worth mentioning. They had a $43 million item for RT, but it got pulled, so we'll discuss that and talk about it next time. With that, I think that covers, with the exception of, a week from today, is the 11th Annual Swearing-In of the new folks for the Citrus Heights PD. So, I believe that's at 10:00 a.m. Oops, up the street. So, looking forward to that. With that, I think we'll move on to the next item. Rhonda?
Okay. Next item is public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to the city clerk. When you are called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Rhonda. So, I have four speaker sheets up here. I take them in the order I gave them, with the exception of Mr. Hale, you want to speak on the budget, so 16 will hold your comments till we get to that item. So, the first speaker we will hear tonight is Sally Carrington, and Sally will be followed by Evie Turner. So, welcome, Sally.
Sally Carrington, presenting a mural project for the exterior niche in front of City Hall on behalf of the History and Arts Commission. Because of the uncertainty of the space, we wanted something fluid, flexible, and removable. After speaking to city staff, we decided that it had to be something that was easily to install and remove. Project spans over two years, so there's no immediate funding needed. The project budget is projected to be $16,000. Most of the funding split up between city contribution of $6,000, $5,000 in grants, and $5,000 fundraising or donations. And there is a contest to garner feedback and include city residents, and city council will be involved and have final selection of artwork. And if we go to the second panel, kind of an outline of the two-year process, there will be an RFQ out requesting artists' resumes, bios, and portfolios about six weeks. I'll work with city staff on that, review submissions, take about three months, select top five winners, and within two-month time period. And that will be done by the History and Arts Commission, as well as Citrus Heights Art, the local nonprofit, and city council. We'll look at it. We'll provide a citywide competition about four months for feedback from city residents, and then, the work would start in, take about nine months, and then, we would end with an unveiling ceremony. This is a great way to generate excitement about the artists, develop community support, and provide civic pride. And I'm asking for support and suggestions from city council on the project as we move forward.
Great. Thank you, Sally. And, you know, special shout-out to the folks on the History and Arts Commission, because I don't really have much of an artsy background, so it's always nice to see people that, you know, take this on and do this. The only thing I will remind the rest of the council members about is, so we've done, done this once before for the Twirling Leaf over there on?
Up and Away.
Up, Up and Away, pardon me, the Twirling Leaf, on Greenback. Everybody has a different opinion on art, and it was all over the board on those, but we did select two of those items. So, I think one of the nice things about, that we learned there was to make sure that whatever is submitted, whether it's a picture, whether it's a, you know, smaller model or whatever, that we, you know, figure out a place in one of these hallways where, and explain to the artists that, you know, we're gonna put them on display so the public can also look at them, and we're gonna be able to, you know, not only yourselves, us, but the public can give us all feedback. So, you know, whether it's a drawing or whatever, just so that they understand it's not gonna be, you know, behind closed doors and nobody's gonna see it, what they present will put out there, and, you know, whether it's voted on or, however, we'll work that out later. But I remember one of them did not want to provide the information to us outside of a picture, because turns out they submitted it somewhere else as well. So, it was like whoever chooses it gets it, and we're like, go ahead, it's going somewhere else. So, comments, suggestions, anything from council? Good. I mean, that's a pretty big wall out there, so.
I'm just glad you're taking your time?
Yep.
To do it right. I think it's great. Look forward to the process, and it was a learning experience, because everybody has really different opinions, as you know, when it comes to art. But I like Jeff's idea of putting it out so that the public can comment, too, as long as they live in Citrus Heights.
Are we gonna restrict it to just Citrus Heights artists?
No, no, no.
No, no, it's comments.
Oh, got it.
Comments.
Yeah, you're...
Got it.
Most, I'm sure most people that come into City Hall live in Citrus Heights.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks very much. It's exciting.
Yep. All right. Evie Turner, and Evie will be followed by Stan Munios.
Good evening, members of the Citrus Heights City Council. My name is Evie Turner, and I am the vice chair of the History and Arts Commission. I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of a recap of what we've done with the last fiscal year's budget for the History and Arts Commission, and to tell you a little bit about the projects that we have going forward. During the last year, we've worked on the oral history interviews. These are interviews that were led by Commissioner Larry Fritz with the history of residents that have lived here in Citrus Heights. From that project, it turned into the Ladies to the Rescue Documentary, which is about our ladies auxiliary and the ladies in white. We did a screening of that documentary here in City Hall, and it was standing room only. Very successful event. In fact, so successful that our local PBS station picked up the documentary and aired that. We've also worked on doing a permanent art collection. The pieces that the city owns, about 40 pieces in our permanent art collection, have now been hung in City Hall and in the city offices for the public to view. We worked on the Hidden Treasures Art Show at Sunrise Mall. So, this was where the, the permanent art collection pieces, as well as pieces from our local community, were hung for several weekends at Sunrise Mall. We do thank them for their partnership. With that show, we had just a record turnout for our participation from both local artists, members of the community who attended, as well as the media that promoted that event. We also worked on the historical display panels, which are hung out in the hallway here, depicting the history of the city of Citrus Heights. And then, we continue to work on the Little Free Libraries, which was a huge community project. 20 libraries that are part of a Give a Book, Take a Book, that are left in 20 different parks throughout Citrus Heights. The Rotary Club here in Citrus Heights will continue to maintain those books with, maintain those libraries with the commission. Going forward, we have a lot on our calendar, and we're really excited about the opportunity to share these projects with you and with our community. We're looking to do Art in City Hall, so it's going to be sort of a similar art show to the Second Saturdays that are done in the midtown Sacramento area. We'll pick a different day so that we're not conflicting with those different events, but we'd like to highlight local artists here in City Hall, as well as restaurants and local businesses that will be a part of that event. We'll also work on a canine art show, so this will be a community event. It's an animal art-themed show, working with local artists and, again, our local businesses. We're looking to partner with the Sacramento Marketplace, Sunrise Marketplace with this project. The purpose of that event will be to raise funds so that the police department can buy a new canine dog. We'll also work on the Day in the Life photo book. So, this is a photography book that's celebrating the 20th Anniversary here in Citrus Heights. We've had quite a few community members that have submitted photos for that book. We were hoping to have that ready by the anniversary party. That did not happen, so we'll promote that at the different art shows and community events that we have coming up. And then, we'll also have the public art niche that Commissioner Carrington told you about. So, we do thank you for your support of the History and Arts Commission and the projects that we do here in the community, and our doors are always open. We welcome your feedback.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Evie.
Stan Munios. How are you tonight, sir?
Great pronunciation. Mayor and council members, retired manager from the J.C. Penney Company after 40 years, settled in a, in the area that we wanted to settle in, which is, we own a home in Citrus Heights, very close to here. And I'm a board member of HART, Citrus Heights HART, which is finding housing for people that have a little difficult time finding housing. Mrs. Cooley attended a meeting that we had today and kind of invited us to come and see what, what's going on here. And I wanted to tell you about an episode that really struck me and opened my eyes about what's happening in California right now, and especially in Citrus Heights that I represent and represent you. I was at a public storage location two weeks ago. I rented a facility for, I called a homeless family to get them through for the next couple of months. A lady came up and was trying to get a location. She had a big truck sitting outside full of furniture, and there was no spots available at this particular Citrus Heights public storage. And I said, wow. We tried to find a place, and they found one about 10 miles away that was, had a site. And I said, wow, you're homeless. And she looked at me, and she says, I am not homeless. I'm a family without a home. I was renting up till two weeks ago. They raised my rent. My husband is a landscaper, number-two guy in a, in a business. He makes about 13 bucks an hour, and that extra increase in his rent put him out of his home. They go, the kids go to the San Juan School District. I saw them in a parking lot. I followed where she went, and they're in a church parking lot, two kids. Father was working. The home, her home was her car, and she was a family without a home. I went to three different locations up Sunrise and just tried to find her a place, and so, we're full. Yes, we did raise our rent, and we're full. You want to sign up? There's 24 people, signed up right below the 24 people, on and on and on. And so, I checked a place today that is right on Sunrise. It's condemned. I walked through it without the owner knowing it, because I was serious about it. The door was wide open. The city closed it down for probably some very good reasons. It's called Sunrise Senior Apartments on Sunrise and Auburn, near Oak, on the right-hand side. It's empty. They have kitchen facilities, and I'm, I tried to call the manager of that place, Mark Salini? Samino? Samino?
Samino.
Yeah, and he hasn't returned a call yet, and I just called him two hours ago. Maybe we can, HART can work something out, find some, they will manage it. They will keep it clean, in better shape than it is now, find out what was done wrong. We've got a lot of people that are now in the category, they're working, but they have low income. They're now in a category that I would call, I put it down as FWOH, Families Without Homes. It's not the homeless of 20 years. They're just there. Our school district, San Juan School District, Citrus Heights alone has 700 kids that are considered without a home. In the whole district, which is, doesn't include, it's the whole San Juan School District, it's huge, there's 3,100 kids that are without a home. I wanted to bring it to your attention. It startled me. My heart started beating. Wow, that's not homeless. That's families without a home. And maybe we can push people that are planning on building apartments, those entrepreneurs, get going, you know? Hustle, get up, get up there. Build that place for 700, 800, $900 rent. They can pay that. They can't pay the 1,100, 1,200, 1,300, and it's moving towards that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I was startled, and I will do anything to represent you. People you want me to go talk to, go see, rundown housing, I thought it was a major crisis when this lady straightened me out. She's without a home, and her family is living in a car in a church parking lot, and it's all over the city, and not just because we're not managing it well. It suddenly happened. Homes for sale, they're not renting homes anymore, they're all selling them. And so, apartments suddenly filled up, and the entrepreneurs are raising the prices. It's what business is about, but maybe we need more apartment housing. That's my comment, and I want to thank Mrs. Cooley for letting us know about this meeting so we can participate with you in solving that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munios. First of all, for sitting on the HART board, because it takes a special commitment. I see we have our homeless navigator here, so thank you for all that you do as well. you do as well. You know, the city contributes to that, and the last numbers I saw specific to our navigator program was, we were, we, because I'm not doing anything, you, were assisting roughly, I think it was around forty-seven percent of the folks that you came into contact with, with, offering them some type of assistance. And yes, that's less than fifty percent, but there's a lot of those folks that don't want to be helped. There are folks out there that choose to be homeless. Probably a day like today, they're not thrilled about it. But, so thank you for what you do from the navigator program, because that, it's money well spent from our end. And yeah, I mean, Mr. Munoz, what the story you just told us is heart-wrenching. I mean, especially when anybody who's gone outside today, you know, it's over a hundred, and somebody's living in their car. That's not a good thing. So. Thank you for coming forward. I have no other speaker sheets, with the exception of Mr. Hale, which we will take again on item sixteen. So, next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar. It is recommended that all consent items be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action are requested by a council member.
So that is items six through eleven.
Move of approval.
We have a motion for approval.
Second that.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Abstained. The motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number twelve, subject to zoning code amendment, accessory dwelling units and structures, residential parking requirements, and other related sections.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division. As mentioned, we're going to talk, present to you a proposed zoning code amendment. About a month or so ago, we were before you with a variety of law updates related to planning with the legislative actions, and this was one big piece of it that did require some updates to our zoning code. And so what this is, is there was two bills passed, AB 2299 and SB 1069. These are related to what we call accessory dwelling units. I'll refer to them through this presentation as ADUs. You might, we used to call them granny flats or second units. So now the formal term is ADU. And what this legislative action did was streamline the process for approving these. We were fortunate here in our city that we have had a pretty streamlined process for quite a while, but many cities and governing bodies in California did not require use permits and a lengthy design review process and so forth. And due to the housing shortage, some, what you just heard about, the legislature said, we need these communities to open up for second units and accessory dwelling units. Therefore, they're legislating to us how we approve them. So we have been doing that streamlined process for a while. So it was pretty minimal impact to us, but some communities are struggling with this. Basically, they said that we could no longer require use permits, as again, we have not done that for quite some time. And they have told us, gave us also some design standards for them that we have not had in the past. So an ADU, just remind you what it is, referred to as a granny unit, a second unit. This is a second unit that's on a single parcel. So you have a parcel with a traditional single-family home or a living unit. This would be a second residential unit on the same parcel. It would have independent living facilities as far as cooking and sanitation and sleeping. The ADU may be attached to the main residence. It could be detached, or it could be the conversion of a garage or the conversion of an existing bedroom into a separate unit. These do not have a restriction on occupancy, so they can be lived in by anybody. At one time, as you recall, legislating required that these had to be lived in by a family member. These do not anymore. We cannot restrict who lives in them. So due to this legislation, we wanted to update our code to be compliant. What the state said was, as of January first, these laws are in effect, and if your code doesn't comply with them, your code is null and void, and you follow the state legislation. So since January, we've been doing that. But we've taken the time to also look at our zoning code, because what happens when you update the code, it inadvertently will affect other sections of the code that could have been unintentional or intentional consequences. So we took a little bit longer to make sure that the new proposals or the changes and how they would impact other sections. And so we did have a couple of other sections that we're proposing to change in conjunction with this. The first big change, and this is through the state, is on parking. And so previously, we required the residents to provide additional parking for the second unit. They had to provide one extra parking space per bedroom. The legislature said, no, you can no longer do that. Well, you can do that, but in these cases, you can't do that. So what they said was, if the living unit is going to be made within the existing structure, so that through the conversion of a garage into an ADU, or a bedroom into an ADU, you can no longer require extra parking, assuming there's no additional footprint, they said you can't have extra parking. Also, if you, if the residence is within a half-mile of public transit, you can't require a public park, you can't require additional parking. The location, previously, the new parking spot, our code required that it be in a certain location, so it wouldn't be in the setback. It had to be outside the front yard setback, outside the side yard setback. So that was somewhat restrictive for most properties as they didn't have the room to accommodate that required extra parking. So the state now says that, well, you can, you must count the parking on the driveway. So if you require extra parking, let them count the driveway, and let them park in the setback areas. So we looked at all that and how that related, and discussed it with staff, and well, most of our properties are within a half-mile of public transit, so right there, most of them were exempt. A very small section of the city that is outside that half-mile, but most are. So if all are going to get the exemption, then we just proposing to eliminate the parking requirement altogether. It makes it cleaner that, no, you don't have to provide the extra parking. So since most of our properties are within the half-mile of transit, they're not required to provide the additional parking. And if they are going to provide additional parking, they can count the driveway, and it can be in the setbacks. We do provide design standards of how that will look, make sure it's the proper width and the length that we've included in the update. But that's the proposed changes related to parking. The size of the ADU, previously, we allowed sixty percent of the main house to be repurposed or to be used to count square footage for the ADU. The state law says fifty percent. So we're going to just remain at the sixty percent is what we've always had, so there's no change there. The change that is occurring is the state said, the sixty percent size is only limited if you're going to do an addition to your home for the ADU. So if you can have an attached unit, you can attach a new unit to your home, but it can be no larger than the fifty percent, sorry, I said sixty, fifty percent. And if it's detached, it can be twelve hundred square feet, no matter what the size of the main house is. So that's really the big change for us, is if it's a detached unit, it can be twelve hundred square feet for your ADU regardless of the size of the main home.
So your ADU can actually be bigger than your house?
In my case, the ADU would be larger than my home. So yes.
Allison, I have a question. I have a clarification. When you're talking about the ADU attached?
Yes.
I heard you say, I believe, that it can be no more than fifty percent of the primary residence?
Uh, yes.
But we're proposing sixty?
Sixty, because that's what our current regulations are, sixty. And the state said it could be fifty, so we're going to stay with our sixty.
Okay. I thought you said no, it's, okay.
I might have said that backwards, so, yes.
So, but the state said it could be at least fifty?
It has to, it could be no less than fifty.
No less than, okay. You said no more. That's what confused me. Okay, got it.
Yep. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
The new twist to the law that we did not have before, that's somewhat unique, is that the conversion of existing space to an ADU. We currently deal with properties that may have built a barn or a large workshop outback, and then over time, they need a place, they want to convert it into living space. So when you look at where that structure sits, it doesn't qualify to be converted into living space because it was built as a storage, and so therefore, it's typically closer to the property lines than what the zoning would allow for living space. Well, the legislative actions did say that if the building that is existing, no matter what it was used for, is to be converted to living space, and it was done legally, for us, that would mean to receive a permit, then they can convert to a living space where it sits on the ground. So this is a little bit different approach to this type of structure than we have had in the past, but this is an action that's required by the law. So if you have a unit, a storage unit that was built, it was built legally, it was built permitted, then you can convert it to an ADU, of course, with the proper permitting procedures, but where it sits, regardless of the setback locations.
A quick question for you. With that in mind, if we have a shop, say that it's built without a permit because it was less than a hundred square feet, I think it's one hundred square feet the county required, or maybe the county was twelve hundred, and we have one hundred, and it sits close to the property line now, that can be added on to and converted to an ADU under this proposal as long as it's permitted?
If it was a legal structure when it started.
Built under the guidelines. It was legal.
Yep.
They can now add to it, make it an ADU, as long as they do it with permits and it meets current standards.
If it's fifty percent of the square footage of the house or greater?
Right.
Or, you said a hundred square feet, so that wouldn't be fifty?
No, right. A hundred square feet, the law was, you could build a shop for a hundred square feet without a permit.
Right, ten by ten.
Ten by ten, on a piece of property. If under this, you want to convert that to an ADU, you can now add to it, you can get the permits, add to it without having to move it, and the setbacks originally that would be required for the building no longer exist as long as they meet the original setbacks for the one hundred square foot shop.
If you're adding to it, you kind of lose that provision of where it sits. It would be the conversion of the existing space as it sits. So if you're converting your shed to a living unit, then it could do it if it was permitted legally where it is. But once you expand it, the new part is going to have to meet the requirements.
Okay.
So you kind of lose that provision if you're changing the footprint.
All right. Thank you.
So those were the highlight of the majority of the required changes for our code to be compliant. As I mentioned, there, it did lead to looking at other sections of the code to see for internal consistencies. And so as you can see, some of the things that a second unit is now allowed to do are pretty easy to do, or they're a lot less stringent. But if you were just coming in to build that shed or that workshop, then you basically had stricter guidelines than a living unit. So those were some of the internal consistencies that we thought were a little bit hard to justify. So when looking at it, we did, are proposing some elective changes, as we're calling them throughout the code, for consistency. And currently, right now, the, our zoning code has two standards in it for allowing accessory buildings. There's, we use a calculation, as you know, called lot coverage, which is, covers the whole property and how much of the entire property can be covered in buildings. And then we also had a separate chart that talked about the coverage for accessory buildings. And that was to, so you didn't have too many accessory buildings on a property as compared to the house. So sometimes using those two charts, we get confusing, and it was hard for us to explain to the public through that. So we are proposing to eliminate one of the standards, which would be the cumulative footprint of accessory buildings, and just go strictly with the lot coverage. And I'll show you that here. So before, if your property was less than ten thousand square feet, you were only allowed twelve hundred square feet of accessory buildings. If your property size was ten to twenty, you could have eighteen hundred. And then if you have a larger parcel, you could have twenty-four hundred or larger with the use permit. So we're proposing to eliminate that cumulative footprint requirement and go strictly with the lot coverage, as a fifty percent lot coverage for your standard RD five lots. We are proposing also to keep that maximum twenty-four hundred square feet in there. If they are proposing larger than that, they would still require the use permit. And then on the parking, looking at parking for ADU, they were given such leeway for parking, we felt that many of that could be a garage conversions. I think we've talked about this before. So people come in to convert their garage for a bedroom or playroom. They can do that, but they do have to replace the parking that they're losing through that garage conversion. And well, now with the ADU requirements, we can't require them to do the extra parking. But if someone came in to convert it to a bedroom, they would have to replace the parking. So we felt that was inconsistent. So we are proposing to remove the parking requirement for single-family residences, that they have to be outside that setback area, that we will allow a driveway to count for parking, not only for your ADU, but for your traditional single-family home. So if they are converting their garage, they have the appropriate driveway, they can count that. We've done extensive outreach on this, worked with the neighbor associations, been in communication with them, presented to the, one of the neighborhood associations, we've developed a fact sheet that was presented to you, posted information to try to get the word out there. I think it's been in the news also several times on the state changes. So I think the community is very well aware. We do have had a lot of people coming into the counter who are anxious for these changes to come through, as many of them are looking forward to building ADUs.
Great. Thank you, Allison. Questions for staff, starting with Mr. Miller?
Just curious, on putting an ADU in an existing structure, does that require to have a separate entrance? Is it totally self-contained?
It does. So if it's detached, it would obviously have its own entrance. If it's a garage conversion, it would have to have a separate entrance. They could still be connected internally, but it would have to have an outside entrance.
Heating area, electrical.
Heating area.
And you mentioned that the legislation had a half-mile requirement to public transit to waive. I'm not quite sure what the definition of public transit is, because we have many houses a mile away from routes, fixed routes. And I was just wondering, are we just doing a blanket and saying, okay, we're not even going to worry about that half-mile, just...
We did actually do a map, and we considered it a bus stop. And so from our map, I think I provided that to you, there was just a very small section that was not within a half-mile of a stop.
So might as well just include those two.
So that's why we said, might as well just, if everyone's going to get the exception, why have the exception, just not require it.
And honestly, doesn't this legislation just throw our zoning out the window? Because these are homes. I don't care if you call them ADUs or whatever. These are homes, and so you're doubling up homes, so an RD four neighborhood can become an RD eight, RD five, RD ten. So we're, it just seems like a way that they created higher densities, and I don't know how well that would be received in our community.
It's an effect, whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
I just, I understand that. I just, the effect will not be known until...
Yeah, this is cleanup, but.
The good, the one thing, you know, is, so we have been doing much of this for quite some time. So it's not real big changes. Parking's probably the biggest change for us. Some cities, this is a significant change. But we have, it's not really changing too much as far as what we've allowed in the past. So hopefully, I don't foresee a big change. And it is, it is a need that is out there.
Well, thank you for being proactive, and especially making the Florida area ratio a lot simpler to understand. I know that's been an issue.
Right. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just some comments. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very nice. I really like the idea that we're getting away from something like a parking restriction when it involves people having the ability to have homes and stuff like that. And as Mr. Miller gets older and stuff like that, he might be looking for smaller homes. And so that's good that this is kind of, this is the kind of thing that's coming along. And Mr. Munoz, in his presentation, was just exactly going towards the same point, that these are the kind of homes that will allow people to enter into something that they can afford. And so getting us out of the, as the roadblock, like with the parking restrictions, I think is wonderful. It's just my memory, and it could be wrong. A long time ago, there was something that we did also that might affect these kind of structures that dealt with a roadway going to the back of homes or things like that. Is that roadblock still in there, or what's with that?
I think what you're referring to is the division of land. So when you divide a land and having the road to the back parcel, and those, that would be different, because that would be totally separate ownership parcels, where these, an ADU, would be on one parcel, so it would always be under the same ownership as the main house. They would not be separated.
So that was more like splitting a lot?
That was when you were splitting a lot, and the access to that back unit or that other unit, the roadways become an issue.
And so not to sidetrack, but do we still have that restriction?
Yes. In some, in most cases, yeah.
Maybe something we need to look at, too, to eliminate roadblocks.
Well, that's also legal. Title requirements have, you can't have a landlocked piece of property.
Is that an ordinance issue or a... Is that an ordinance issue, or a law?
It's a law, it's bigger than Citrus Heights.
I'm going to take care of that one then.
Jeanie, Al, questions?
Nope, thank you, Allison, very much.
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for incorporating a few things, because this is the second time we've heard a lot of this. First time, a little bit of a shock, but we've gotten used to our legislatures doing things that we all don't necessarily like, but some of them are good. And I'll leave it at that. What's the pleasure of the council here?
Well, this is a...
Oh, public hearing, sorry. Open the public hearing. Do I see anybody rushing up to speak?
On this issue?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to...
Of course.
My name's Margaret Kleek. As you noted, it is what it is. It's the law that there's nothing to be done about it. I would like to share a little bit of experience from growing up in San Francisco, where housing became a real squeeze before it did here. My neighborhood, when I grew up in 2005, my family home was the only home in the entire neighborhood that did not have what was at that time an illegal apartment in the basement and garage. Here in Citrus Heights, I don't know at this point in time that the ROI on doing accessory unit dwelling is going to be that great for people. What I ask, because there's nothing to do about, you know, stopping it or anything, what I would ask is that the city be totally circumspect, making sure that these units are up to code, that somebody doesn't just say, hey, Laverne, slap up some side wall in the garage, and we'll charge somebody $1,000 bucks. I hope that it's not one of those situations where it's easier to get forgiveness than permission if you build something and it's not quite up to code. And one thing that I think is very important, I don't have the knowledge to do this, but I'm sure that there are people that do, that you write up a formula that people can enter into a computer that says how much it costs to put in another toilet line, how much it costs to finish a garage, how much it costs for this, that, and the other thing, so that people can actually calculate what their costs are and what their return on investment will be, how many years it will take for them to cover the costs that they put into that dwelling. Because I think a lot of people will have dollar signs in their eyes and think that it's going to be a real boon, and not really understand what the costs are going to be. Another issue, and this is something I brought up through the years, Citrus Heights is the only community in the entire area that allows people to park motorhomes in their driveway, totally blocking their garage. Maybe that's something that needs to be looked at. If we're going to have accessory dwelling units, then maybe we have to rethink whether you can put your boat or your motorhome in that parking space as well, because parking spaces are going to become an issue. Again, my experience in San Francisco, the homes, the home that I grew up in is now on Zillow at $1.25 million. My neighborhood looks like a slum, with people parking on what used to be our small lawns. The 20-foot space between my house and my neighbor's house is now all cement, and they pull four cars up alongside that. So just because the houses are expensive doesn't mean that it's not going to really deteriorate the community. That's all.
Great, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Any other public comment on this particular item? Not, I'll close the public comment. Any additional comments from the council members, or the pleasure of them?
Well, I move that we support this first rea, is it a first reading?
It's first reading, we've got to make it exempt from CEQA first.
Okay, oh, we do, okay. Then I, I, oh, that's right, I moved that we determine that this project, or this ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
All right.
And I introduced the first reading and waived the reading of the entire ordinance.
Second.
So we have motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Allison. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, subject is general plan and zoning code amendment to allow residential uses in the business professional zone.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember, Casey Kemp, in our Planning Division. So it's a housing night, I guess. The motion before you is to amend our general plan and zoning code to allow housing as an option in the BP, Business Professional Zone. When we updated our zoning code in 2006, we updated all the other commercial zones to allow housing as an option at 20 units per acre. And for some reason, the BP was not included, we're not exactly sure why, but we think in the spirit of moving towards more affordable housing and creating, eliminating vacancies and encouraging redevelopment of sites, we think that amending the BP zone to allow housing is a good idea. Some of the issues you spoke to earlier about affordability and creating more units. So it's in line with the general plan, housing element goals, and we think that this will result in, you know, more development of housing, and we think it's a good thing. With that, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously approval to the council, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
I have one.
Jeanie?
So this code amendment speaks to converting the use of a property from business professional to housing. And is the idea that it would be torn down and housing would be built?
It could go either way. We have about 80 acres of BP housing, our BP zone land in the city. About five of it is vacant currently, and it's been vacant forever. And so in your packet, you have example of those different parcels, which could, that are vacant, that could be redeveloped. But it could apply to something where someone would tear down an existing building in the BP zone.
There's no chance that is there, that commercial establishments similar to what we heard a hearing on earlier tonight, could include residential use in a business establishment? I.e. massage parlors?
No. I mean, we'd follow our code. There could be a mixed-use project that comes out of it, but not that kind of mixed-use.
Isn't that what we're really looking more towards, is mixed-use, you know, the future, the current, I guess, but the desire to mix housing and retail and restaurants and stuff like that all into one?
That's correct. Current planning, kind of across the state, is to have more mixed uses. It means people walk, are walk instead of drive, it has a lot of co-benefits, and these kind of changes make it easier to happen.
Great.
Sound of approval? Have we got to do the CEQA part, the separate?
Yeah, do you have any?
I'm sorry.
It's a, okay. Yeah, I think we can do all three of them together.
Chair, uh, Mayor.
So if you could hold your motion just for a minute, it is a public hearing as well. So I'll open it to the public. Anybody want to talk to us about BP changing to allow residential use? All right, seeing nobody coming up, we'll close the public hearing. Did you have a comment or a question before?
Just a question. It's, are these just examples, the five parcels, or is that...
Those are five mostly vacant parcels. The others have more, the other BP parcels in the city have more development on them.
Those are just an example.
Yeah. And so that'll get added to our housing element, and that'll, there's a portion of our housing amount called a vacant land inventory, and that's given, we can give that to developers that are interested in developing housing, so they know where housing is. And so that's the point of that.
Sounds good. So we have a motion, and Brad, I'm assuming you meant exempted from CEQA, adopt the resolution, and introduce by reading title only.
Exactly.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, no.
Are you on the right one?
Yeah, I am now. All right, so we have a motion for A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a second on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Casey. And I believe we have one more public hearing item.
We do. Item number 14, Citrus Heights Community Center rental rates and audio/video fee schedule, public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Chris Myers, General Services Department. Before I start, I would like to provide Councilmember Daniels an update regarding Sayonara, that that work is actually already scheduled for the fourth time this coming Monday. So we're trying to stay ahead of that this year.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. The item before you tonight is requesting for an increase in community center rental rates and the creation of AV fees. Currently, rental rates have not been adjusted in five years. The goal of this increase is to help maintain competitiveness in the regional market, provide rental rate increase that will add for additional revenue for building maintenance and equipment replacement expenses. And I'll give you an example, in fiscal year 1516, we ran about $56,000 just in replacement costs at the community center, far more than actually our replacement funding covers. This will also offset, help to offset rising utility and staff costs, and provide for continued sustainability without impacting the general fund. So this will allow us to bridge that gap, because the original goal of the community center was to be self-sufficient, to actually be able to live off of the revenue that it generated and not be an impact to the general fund. The proposed rate increases in front of you range from all of the different types of spaces. We have done some adjustments based upon some discussions with staff and council and other members where we think this falls, and I can explain that some more. But as a reminder, your larger event packages, medium, small, those are all multiple-room spaces, there are lots of components involved. So if you see the 250, you think it's a large number, or the 300 for the non-resident, non-resident nonprofit, there's like 12,000 square feet included in some of that space. So it does cover a substantial amount of the building. As I can said before, five years have gone by, and the actual adjustment that we did the last time was to eliminate categories and round up some numbers based upon the regional impact that was going on at that We also did, if you noticed, down through the North Flex rooms and some of the East rooms, we lowered, lowered some rates and increased a little bit on some other ones. And that's a reflection of rooms that just do not get rented. They're not the ones with carpet, these are the ones with concrete floors or the cork flooring, and they just don't have the same appeal. People look at them and they go, it's a great space, but you have these other ones that look better. And so we're trying to maybe help balance out the use in the full facility. The additional increase we're requesting is the creation of a new AV use fee. These fees that are generated will cover event planning consultations with renters and vendors. This is a huge shift in the way that some of our events are put together now, for example, with Sacramento County, when they do their volunteer banquet, some of the San Juan School District events. There's a lot more planning that goes into this now than we ever had before. We have folks that want to record, do video feed, are looking for different ways to broadcast this whole new future that's going, and we need to step up to it so that we can maintain our position as well. We also have things that are outdated. When you realize that the building is going to be eight years old, but the planning that went into the AV system was done in 2009 and 2008, so it's already a 10-year-old system. So folks are looking for HDMI hookups, other special features that we need to plan for, and this additional fee will generate a revenue of about $60,000 annually, based upon 343 events that use AV. We have more than 343 events in the center annually, but these are the ones that use a gross amount of additional AV equipment and require additional amount of either input from Safer, Associated Sound, if there's going to be additional equipment that needs to come in, or if they're actually going to hire a third party, and we need to consult with all these groups together. These fees, there, it's a one-time fee and then a per-use fee. So every contract that is created for an event that would have AV fees would be charged the $100. That's a flat fee. For example, if you have multiple events annually under one contract, you're still paying the one-time $100 fee. Now, every time that you use a projector or you use a microphone, you will be charged the $50 per projector and the $25 per microphone. That does help to offset costs. We have already, in the last eight years, rebuilt one projector, and we have replaced one projector. And now we are at a point where our projectors are out of market, they're no longer made. EKAI has changed their models, and we will reach a point where we will be looking at $35,000 to $45,000 per projector to replace them. So this will help us to offset and create some revenue for replacement moving forward. So this evening, we're asking for rental rate and AV rate fees to be included in the budget review process annually. That does not mean that we are asking to raise them, we may be asking to lower them, depending upon what the market change does, because there are multiple new facilities all over the region that are all in competition. Rockland Elk Grove has some additional things now that are going on. Staff will maintain an annual market analysis in order to remain competitive, and that will include an annual update programmed in to look at everybody else's rates. And it's a per-person, everything comes down to how much you pay per person to use a space, and I have a sheet that I will show you in a moment. And then the proposed new rates would provide additional revenue stream for the equipment replacement, maintenance needs to support the preservation of the facility, and of course, bridge that gap in the general fund, and provide for the facility to sustain itself moving forward. And I will give you just a rough sheet to look at. So if you, if you look at the sheet here, based upon your square footage, the number of people that you can hold, so if you look just briefly at the 500 to 790 people, Citrus Heights is 28 cents a person, the average is 46 cents, but then you realize who you're competing with, and based upon that, you follow through as to where it falls on your averages. And some, some of our rental rates are actually lower than the regional average. Questions?
No, thank you, Chris. I mean, I know we've had a study session on this as well, and you hit the nail on the head when you said the original purpose for the, you know, when it was built, that the council talked about was not to be a drain. We don't want to be the highest, you know? It would be great to be the lowest, but at the same point, if we're having to supplement that, to me, it should be the folks that are using it, not the rest of the citizens in town. So. Questions or concerns from the council, before I open it up for comments to the public? All right, public hearing, open it up for anybody wanting to come up and talk to us. Seeing nobody hustling up, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I was going to make a comment, but you gobbled me off, so.
Okay.
Just, my, as I look at this, my main concern is for the smaller user, for second to the highest, well, no, third to the highest, I guess. Okay, what happened here?
Well, I went to a second screen, this is, this is...
Go back to that other screen?
Absolutely.
So I can look at what I'm addressing.
Absolutely.
So on the 20 to 49, we're, we're going to be at $1.81 per person, and, you know, that's almost 30 cents more on the average, and substantially more than Roseville and Folsom to our, who are...
Correct.
Close competitors, Rockland not so much, and Rancho not so much, because of proximity.
Correct.
So, I don't know, I just, I'm concerned that it might turn away some of the smaller groups that would otherwise would use us, when they compare us to...
I can honestly tell you, Jeanie, that, for example, this is why we lowered the room rate for the East rooms, and each one of those rooms individually holds 25 people, if you really want to put 25 people in there. We just don't. It just, it's so seldom that that small of a group come to our facility to use a space like that, because generally, we, they're looking for more space. I'm not saying that it won't happen, but I don't know that we would actually create enough revenue off of that increase to substantiate even having it, but we tried to balance it out that way.
Okay, that's very good enough to know.
Well, I think one of the things you mentioned was, if we incorporate it into the annual budget process, we'll hear a year from now whether you were right or not.
Correct, because we...
And if you weren't right, you'll try to right-size it.
Correct. We'll come back annually at a department, if we're not going to propose anything to be changed, we will give you an annual department update, where we are, what's been generated, so that everybody knows what's going on. And then if there's areas that we think need to be addressed, we want you to understand that, we want you to consider changing it, we'll, we'll do that then. But I don't think that it's fair to have the facility go five years without these things being taken care of.
Well, and I agree that we need the revenue for maintenance and replacement, there's no question. Things don't last forever, and technology is changing faster than we can even keep up with.
Correct.
One of the ways we'll know is, as you give us our monthly report and the FYI, as to what the rentals, the new rental figure is, you know, we'll be able to see if that number doesn't increase at the same velocity as it has in the past.
Correct.
Okay. When are these going to be effective?
Uh, two months from passage, so September 1st.
So just a follow-up comment, I had briefly spoke to Michelle earlier, but, so 60 days from now, these go into effect, but I'm assuming anybody who has a reservation intact today that's paid a deposit and has a contract...
Correct.
Will be subject to whatever the rates were when they entered it.
Correct.
But if I just have a reservation for January of next year and do not have a contract or have not put down a deposit, I would be subject to these new... or have not put down a deposit, I would be subject to these new rates. However, if they didn't like them, we, there would be no cancellation if they backed out. Is that correct, or, I mean?
Correct. That's, that's correct. And then we, we have, you know, multiple users that are booked all the way into 18. Those are our long-term folks, like Church of God, you know, weekly users, and they're already all the way in 18. It doesn't affect them at all.
Okay.
Does that apply also on the AV?
They actually don't use any AV, but yeah, it would, it would apply.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, whatever the rates were at the time that they, you signed a contract. Yeah. All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move adopting.
We have a motion, and did I hear a second?
Yep.
In a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item, actually, item 15, back to the regular calendar.
We are back to the regular calendar. Item number 15, subject is contract execution with Sacramento Self-Help Housing for Homeless Navigator Services.
Welcome, Catherine and Lieutenant, Commander, why did I say Lieutenant? Oh, ouch.
It's all right, I started that way.
Okay. You know, at least I didn't say chief, so. I apologize, Commander Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Catherine Cooley, Development Specialist with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm joined here with Commander Gina Anderson with the Citrus Heights Police Department. We're here to present to you both the contract renewal for homeless navigator services as well as some current police department survey results that inform the navigator program. As a brief recap, the service is provided by Sacramento Self-Help Housing. It's a contract that the city executes annually for a full-time service to navigate homeless clients. And right now, the city has a success rate in this program of 43%, and it's 43% of clients that choose to engage with the navigator. Those people have accessed either permanent or temporary housing through this service. We have had, to date in this fiscal year, a total of 164 participants. 58, 58 of those have been permanently housed, as well as 13 temporarily housed, and 36 have accessed the Citrus Heights Winter Sanctuary this year, which was the first time that a winter sanctuary oper, operated for eight weeks within the city of Citrus Heights. And this was done by the Citrus Heights Homeless Assistance Resource Team. These services were also provided because one of the intents of the navigator is that ideally, someone is housed through the program, but secondarily, they are provided with resources that remove the barriers that they have to getting housed. So for example, getting an ID gets you document-ready and available to go into the system to access housing that requires that identification. As well as you'll see the VI STAT item, that's a fancy word for getting on the waitlist, the county waitlist, for homeless housing. And so 40 people have been enrolled in that as well. The navigator program is funded through a combination of sources. First, our Economic Development Support Fund, our Community Development Block Grant, which is federal funding, and community support funding. And you will see the first and third item listed in the budget tonight. This is the program's progress from fiscal year 1516 to 1617. We experienced a significant jump with the additional resources of having a full-time contractor performing this service, as well as really making those connections with housing providers. And so we saw an increase from, a substantial increase from 1516 to 1617 to up to 58 people permanently housed and climbing, which is an increase of 91%.
Mayor and members of city council, I'm here this evening as a representative of the police department, and I'm in support of renewing our contract with Sacramento Self-Help and the Homeless Navigator Services. But before I go into the, the homeless count and survey, I, I think it would be important for me to recognize Catherine Cooley and, and her efforts in leading this program with the navigator. It has been very successful for us, and, and she's really been phenomenal in spearheading that effort, as well as Sergeant Jason Baldwin, who with his pop team at the police department have taken the navigator into the field in order to help us identify the homeless and their needs in our community, as well as they were the leaders in our homeless survey count for both 2016 and 2017. So in, in the police department, our strategies when we're, when we're dealing with our homeless community, it's, it's pretty much twofold. It's, it's, it's taking criminal or law enforcement action against those homeless people who are criminal and homeless, well as identifying homeless people who want resources and, and being able to get those resources to those people who want to be housed and off the street. So, so what we've done in the past couple of years is, in April, we conduct a, what we call our homeless survey and count. And it's a, it's a one-month survey, and it's not just our pop team that's involved in that survey, it's really our, our entire police department, particularly our patrol division. And they go out into the areas in our community where we know that from past experience that, that homeless congregate, as well as they take survey cards with them in their patrol bags, and when they encounter homeless individuals through their daily calls for service, they interview those homeless individuals and see really what their needs are, and then, and then work with the navigator to try to connect those individuals with the, the necessary resources to help get them off the street. So you could see by our 2016 results, we had 192 people that were identified in our homeless count. In 2017, that was significantly reduced. But I would like to caution you that, that when we're looking at these numbers, these are individuals that are contacted, typically contacted in some fashion by the police department, whether that's through calls for service or our officers being in areas where we know homeless are congregating, and make those, those identifications through that method. So you can see, though, that there was a significant reduction in the, those number of people that were contacted. But then also through the survey, they looked at the, the demographics of that population and then, and then compared those demographics from 2016 to 2017. And you can see that, that although there's minor number changes, the percentages are, are pretty much consistent between 16 and 17. The real significant number that we've seen this year that's important for us is that in 2016, 30 to 35% of all of the calls for service that were responded to by the police department involved in some manner our homeless population. And in 2017, you can see that that had a significant reduction there to 17, between 17 and 22% of the calls for service. So really, what that equates to is, I mean, it's, it's really like hard dollars in the term of officers and their time and what they can be used, using their time to be doing. And if that time can be diverted from, from calls for service involving our homeless, they can then focus that time on other issues that are going on within the community. So I think that that number is very significant. Some, some other significant correlations that you can make, not just with our homeless survey and count, but with the information that Catherine Cooley also provided, is that there are fewer homeless that were identified through our survey in 2016 compared to 2017. There were more homeless people who were housed this year compared to last year. And of the 58 people who were permanently housed this year, 56% of those people were previously contacted by the Citrus Heights Police Department. And then, again, there was a significant reduction in the calls for service involving our homeless population. So we rely heavily on our working relationship with the navigator and with community and economic development within the city. It's a great partnership between all of us and the police department, and, and I, I don't think that these, this, these results could have been obtained, at least not this significantly, without the partnership with, with all the groups.
Thank you, Commander.
And of course, I would be remiss in not recognizing some of our community groups. It isn't just the police department and the city that, and our navigator program that are working towards these efforts. But we also have, who you heard from today, our, our heart group within the city. They also contribute to the, the Veterans Stand Down. We have a very active American Legion Post 637 who are helping us as well, and the various churches within our community that are providing winter sanctuary.
And so with that, we would recommend that the council approve the resolution to authorize this contract, and we're available if you have any questions.
Great. Thanks for the update. And again, I think the total that we're talking about is 51, 52,000. Commander, I think you brought up a very valid point when you talked about the percentage of calls and the calls for service. I, I don't know what, you know, if we've ever broken down an average call for service in terms of cost, you know, when your car, equipment, officer, et cetera. But to see, you know, 10, 15, 20% reduction for $51,000, I guarantee you that it's, it's a lot more if you'd figured out if that, if we were back in the 30 to 35% range versus what we're spending for the navigator. And it's one of the programs that we've tried that's actually showing great results. I mean, the one-on-one, the contact, that, that all seems to work. Is it perfect? No. I mean, but again, it's, it's a program that's working very well for us, and I'm glad we bumped the, took the effort last year to increase it to full-time versus what it was, and, you know, numbers are looking good. So thank you, Catherine. Thank you to our navigator, and thank you, Commander, for presentation. Other comments or questions from the council? Brett, no?
Just go what you said.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we-
Hold on, sorry. I apologize. Catherine, Carpenter turned in a late blue sheet here.
She arrived late, too, Mayor.
Kathy Lynn, so if you would. Sorry. I mean, you even wrote it in red. How could I miss it? But I did.
I'll be very brief. I'm sorry. I did come in late. I really just wanted to thank you guys for supporting the navigators. You know, we came to you a few years back and asked you to start this program, and we really appreciate that you did. Heart supports the navigator as well with bus passes and gift cards and other types of services. And I just kind of wanted to state that we, we are having really great results. I want to caution, because there are still too many people without homes. As you heard, 3,177 students in the San Juan School District, 700 of them here. The food bank has experienced a 25% increase, and the majority of those are homeless. This is the Sunrise Christian Ministries Food Bank. So, you know, we don't want to rest on our laurels, of course. Also want to just give you a very quick summary. You have the slide, but just kind of a little reminder, I'll come back later for maybe a more detailed report. But just a reminder of what we do. Heart produces, coordinates, and runs a winter sanctuary. We had 80 unique individuals come through the winter sanctuary this year. We are working very hard to extend that for a longer period of time. You know, we had a very rough winter, and we had to stop in the second week in February, and certainly could have gone much longer, and we could have started earlier. We started December 31st. So the goal is to start earlier and run that longer. We do produce, coordinate, and run a Veterans Stand Down event. That was in April of this year. Great results. Next year, we'll be partnering with Carmichael Heart, so we hope that'll help us to increase our, our veterans. And this year, we're looking at, well, not this year, but we're planning this year on a homeless connect event in 2018. Two homeless connects. One, we're hoping to work with the San Juan School District, and that'll be focused on students and parents of homeless students. And then another homeless connect for our at-risk population, and we'd use the same template as the stand-down event. It's just that it would be for homeless people, obviously without the VA services, but they would come and get IDs and clothing and medical and dental, social services, housing counseling, et cetera. We're working on housing strategies. We're hard as fundraising to provide scholarships to existing transitional homes and permanent supportive housing and AOD programs throughout the region. We're working to support projects that will be coming your way, hopefully in the next 12 to 18 months. And also, so we're growing. So Carmichael has a heart, as I just mentioned, and just this week, we learned that Folsom has a heart. And it took them a long time. They didn't want to really acknowledge or go, I have to say, go down that route. We knew we had tried previously, but now they have. It's called Heart of Folsom, and they are going to be funding a navigator as well. That's one of the first programs they're going to do. So I think that's good news. And then I have one final bit of good news, and that is that last year, the California Association of Nonprofits started a new program. It was Nonprofits of the Year, and basically, they'd be nonprofits from each assembly district throughout the state of California. This year, Simbleman Cooley notified me that the Citrus Heights Heart and the Rancho Cordoba Heart are his picks for Nonprofit of the Year for this year's program. So we will be going to the Capitol on next Wednesday, June 28th, and having lunch with legislators and other nonprofits. So we're really proud of that, and it's a good opportunity for us to get our name out there and network with other nonprofits.
Great.
And that's it.
Congratulations. Congratulations on-
One question.
Yes.
On the, the coordination with the, or the Carmichael Heart, I mean, stand-down event?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, do you have a location for that?
Well, it would still be at Holy Family.
Okay.
So we would still do it in Citrus Heights. They would just help us with outreach in Carmichael and, you know, volunteering and helping to coordinate-
Get more vets there. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy Lynn, for all you're doing on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now, what's the pleasure of the council? Item 15.
I move that we approve the funding this year for the homeless navigator services.
Second?
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution and the city manager execute the contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero. And we don't have anything else, do we? Oh.
Best for last.
Almost, almost. Budget item, Ms. Daniels, or who's giving this? I know you wait all year to do this.
So we have, item number 16 is the budget adoption.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Chris Boyd, the city manager. It's my pleasure to introduce the 1718 budget for your consideration and all of its various moving parts that really pull it all together. As we celebrate our 20th year of cityhood this year, we've had the opportunity to reflect on many accomplishments. Strong financial policy and management has positioned the city well for our long-term future and to exceed our strategic goals, as we have done so well throughout our first 20 years. This budget plan continues to reflect our commitment to providing quality services, improving the city's infrastructure, and growing our local economy as we maintain long-term financial stability. Last year, the city completed the construction of our new city hall, nearly have broken ground on the new medical office building. Combined, these projects represent the largest public-private partnership in our history and constitutes a direct investment of $53 million into the city. Exciting growth opportunities are ahead of us as we maintain a focus on public safety, economic development, our city's brand, and our partnership in local education. So a proposed large housing project, new mall owners, and an engaged Auburn Boulevard business group are all opportunities for the city to attract new families and businesses to our community as we move forward with quality projects. But like most all cities, we face some financial challenges. Flat sales tax revenues from brick-and-mortar businesses, reduced general fund reserve balance, and five years remaining on our revenue neutrality agreement with Sacramento County require us to be even more deliberate in our financial policy. The next five fiscal years will require a combined strategic approach of limited use of our general fund reserves, revenue growth and enhancement, and continued disciplined spending, while considering other financial options as opportunities arise. The great news is that we'll receive our property tax revenue in fiscal year 22- The great news is that we'll receive our property tax revenue in fiscal year 2223, which will position us well for the long-term financial health and growth of our city. So, getting into the budget plan. So, the city continues, as I said, to be financially stable. The following revenues are projected to increase in this next fiscal year: property tax, motor vehicle license fees, utility users' tax, and franchise fees. The city continues to use a conservative approach toward projecting revenue and expenses, and the budget before you this evening reflects the following guiding principles. A budgeting approach by where each department has to justify their expenses regardless of last year. We've been working on this as a staff really since before Christmas. They've done a very good job, you know, in a wholesale way, bringing forward, looking at their budgets and what their needs are in a variety of different areas. We're able to program some of those needs into this budget where it's reflected, and in many cases, we were not. But we feel, we feel good about where we are and what we're proposing tonight. The budget supports an ongoing, council-approved work program from our biannual strategic planning retreats. So, everything that we do within the budget, within our work plan, how we manage and how we program, really all stems from the, from the council's goals. It reflects the fact that the city is built out and therefore has limited revenue growth, at least in its near future, a significant backlog of capital improvement and maintenance needs, and the fact that the city is five fiscal years away from revenue neutrality. And this does cause us to think a little bit differently as opposed to, you know, if we are 10 years or 15 years out. So, this conversation is active with regard to revenue neutrality. So, the spending plan in this budget presented tonight reflects the council and the city leadership team's continued focus on providing excellent services and upgrading our infrastructure and facilities in a financially sustainable way. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, Stephanie Daniel, and have her walk you through the highlights and the various components.
Good evening, Stephanie Daniel, Finance Director. So, we had a couple of budget workshops this year. On May 25th, we had the community support funding, and on June 8th, we had the capital improvement program and individual department presentations. So, this year's fiscal year 1718, the revenues are budgeted at $34.9 million. We have a transfer from the general fund reserve of $275,000, bringing the total to $35.2. The expenses are about $34.9, and there's this OPEB payment that we make every year to pay for our other post-employment benefits, which is just a small portion of retiree healthcare. And although this payment isn't mandatory, it is strongly encouraged that we do make it, because if we don't, that amount that is due every year just continues to grow. So, we are recommending that we would transfer from the general fund reserve to cover that OPEB payment. And at mid-year next year, I'll come back and let council know how we stand, and we wouldn't make that transfer until the end of the fiscal year if needed, because we are budgeting our revenues conservatively, and hopefully they will come in higher than what we are projecting. So, the general fund revenue as compared to last fiscal year is an increase of a little over $500,000. This is excluding the property tax revenue, which we don't receive, so these are real We have several major capital projects in fiscal year 1718. And we have several resolutions. So, we have a resolution, recommendation for a resolution approving fiscal year 1718 annual budget and fiscal year 1718 through '21, '22 CIP program. And I was, was brought to my attention that I have a typo in my resolution, so in my reso, I have fiscal year 1617, but I will correct that, so the numbers really are the true numbers. I just have the wrong fiscal year there. So, that's the first resolution. We also have a resolution authorizing four and a half total new positions. So, one is to add two full-time custodian positions and one three-quarter time custodian position in the general services department. That net increase is 2.75 full-time equivalent employees. The net cost to the general fund is less than $2,000, because we'll be eliminating several part-time positions and bringing contract work in-house that we're currently paying for outside contractors to do right now. Another one is to increase the current three-quarter time animal services officer position to a full-time position, so that net increase is a quarter of full-time equivalent. Net cost to the general fund is approximately $4,000 in fiscal year 1718, because we have a PetSmart grant that will cover about $10,000 of the total cost. So, going forward, it would be about $14,000 in future fiscal years to the general fund. We would like to incorporate the current grant-funded police department, police officer position in the police department. This position was funded by a grant from the state, and those funds will be depleted about halfway through the fiscal year 1718. So, the cost to the general fund to keep that full-time position is $75,000 in fiscal year 1718. So, fiscal year 1819 forward, it'll be about $150,000 to keep that position. Add one full-time police officer position and one half-time community services officer position to the police department. That's a net increase of one and a half full-time equivalent employees. These employees will be working in the Red Flex, the Red Light Program. So, before, we had reserve officers that were doing that, and so we're going to eliminate several vacant reserve officer positions, and the net cost to the general fund for this change is $2,000. We also have a resolution approving adoption of ICMA's 401 money purchase plan. There's no additional cost to the city for that. It's just another retirement savings plan. We have a resolution amending the city manager's authority to act on claims filed against the city. This is one that was adopted when the city was first incorporated. It has not been updated, so this is just an update to an old resolution. We have a resolution establishing a funding process for residents empowerment association of Citrus Heights and their neighborhood associations. And we have a resolution approving economic development funding for a consultant to assist the Auburn Boulevard Business Association, and a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the Greater Sacramento Area Economic Council and the City of Citrus Heights in an amount not to exceed $33,817. The budget process is truly a team effort, and like the city manager said, we've been doing this since before Christmas. And I'd like to thank the city manager, the executive team, and city staff, Regina Cave, Fon Merrill, and Maria Velardi for all of their assistance in putting this document together. Questions and comments?
Well, first, thank you, all the folks that worked on it, and particularly Chris. You know, pretty much the first day Chris took his new job, he started talking about this year's budget. And he pulled the numbers apart. Coming from law enforcement background and having really, to tackle his first full-citywide budget, I give him credit. He pulled things out, and he didn't take anything in the budget for granted. He, you know, if he didn't understand it, he drilled down and actually, you know, made me look at a few things a little differently. So, kudos to that. I think it's a better budget because of that, because you fully understand everything. And a lot of work goes in this, you know? I mean, it's funding for reserve replacement costs, you know, there's police department, general services. It's a, it's a complicated thing. So, I thank everybody who was involved. I think it's a well-put-together budget, you know? Unfortunately, we have to rely somewhat on consultants for projections for future income and sales tax. And this is a city that's driven quite a bit by sales tax. I mean, you know, over time, we'd like to change that, and I think we are, but it's not projected to be rosy down the road in terms of increased sales tax, because a lot of brick-and-mortar businesses are, you know, I mean, I think you saw in the paper the other day, Amazon just bought Whole Foods or is planning on it. We don't have a Whole Foods here, but, you know, with deliveries and all the other stuff going on, sales tax will continue to, you know, level off or shrink, not grow what it's used to in the future. So, I think we have, you know, a solid budget. I'd love to say that, you know, we got all this extra money coming in, but it is what it is. We're still financially viable and solid city. So, I'm glad where the numbers came out, you know? Wish there'd be more, but it's pretty good. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I had the privilege of sitting on the Finance Committee with Mayor Slowey. And again, thank you to our leadership team and the city manager. And as Jeff put it, it's going to be a tight five years looking at our 10-year model, if you look at that closely. But I'm encouraged to see after that the rebuilding of our reserve and the plan we have. It's just phenomenal. Now, one thing I wanted to point out, as you were talking about Chris drilling down to this as his first budget, is he and staff were able to identify a number of line items that were either not funded or underfunded in recent years, and it's an ongoing annual expense, and it just wasn't in our budget. So, I think it's really tightened up in that aspect, and seeing a lot of the line items broken out, even some broken out more than I've seen before, it, I think, really, really helps in understanding where the money's going. And I think bringing custodial services in-house makes sense now, and I've also seen very good coordination on our interdepartmental shared costs and divvying that up properly. So, one thing I noticed is important for us as a council to manage our budget and be very judicious on conferences and continuing education. So, Brett and Al, you might need to wait a year. No.
No.
No. Yeah, we need to get Al into the League's new council member program. And, yeah, I hope we don't have to draw on the reserve for the OPEBs, but we have a plan for that. And that's, what's OPEB? That's other post-employment benefits. Got it.
Good job.
Yes, and good job on the budget. So, I'm done talking. Thank you.
Brett?
Thank you. Big thanks to the city manager and finance and staff. That's where the hard work is done. We get to come, sit up here and improve things and makes us look good politically, I guess, that we have a good budget and whatnot, but the hard work is done with the staff. And so, thank you very much for that. My only comment on the budget would be that it reflects the proper priority that a city or county should start with, and that's a strong commitment to public safety and quality of life, and that's what we're about in Citrus Heights. So, thank you for that.
Great. Jeannie?
I echo the gratitude that's been expressed. I just can't imagine what it's like to really live with a budget plan for six months and have to be working on that. It's a huge, huge piece of work, and thank you. It was a fine budget. And I'm just, question on, a couple of our funding sources are going away, or at least they appear to be. And so, my question is, example, the PetSmart, is it PetSmart grant? Or is it the other?
PetSmart grant we have in 1718.
Okay. So, is that a grant that we can apply for over, beyond that year? Or is that, is that a?
Iffy.
It depends.
Okay. So, it's possible?
We will try.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then, are there, I know we, we apply for whatever, anything and everything we can, so this is with the presumption that we don't have those outside sources that we will carry on and make it work within our budget. So, I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, perfect example was, you know, three years ago, when we approved the additional FTE, the officer. We knew that was a limited-
Right.
-grant, but three, three years is pretty good, and, you know, we made the commitment that, and we're all doing it tonight, that, you know, we need that officer.
Right.
So, it's just one of some of those things that you have to do that, you know, and I'm sure Chief Ron Lawrence is always looking for cop's money and other thing that's out there. It just seems the federal government is not as judicious as it used to be in terms of sending those out. So, if they're out there, we'll find them. If not, we'll continue to fund them. So, thank you. Al?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Chris and the staff, the directors of the departments for taking the time to sit down with me when I first came on board and go over the budget, taking the time to explain it to me as a neophyte from the group that's setting up here, so I could get a good handle on where we were going, what your dreams and aspirations and thoughts and plans were, and how the folks were going to be handling and accomplishing those things. And it truly helped to sit here this evening, through the discussions with you, Chris, and with the rest of the folks, to understand how all this is coming together. And I appreciate the time you folks took, and I take a great pleasure to say that this was a great group effort, and it shows in what we see tonight. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Al. Before we come to a decision from the council, we do have one member of the public, Rich Hale, would like to speak on 16F, ABBA, Auburn Boulevard Business Association. So, right now, we're all pretty good. Don't blow it here.
Here we go.
No pressure.
Before you make your decision here. Good morning, Mayor Slowey and city council members. I'm Richard Hale, the Chair of the Citrus Heights Auburn Boulevard. I'm here tonight to show my, my support for the funding, the proposed funding for the association. We are very pleased on our progress and on our first year, going into our second year, working out there, working with the business owners, property owners and tenants on Auburn Boulevard. We are very excited about our progress and our future with the association, and with this funding, this will take us to the next level that we need to move, move into to keep us a vital component of the city. We, we appreciate the city staff, our police department that, that helps us every month or every bimonthly, our meetings, to keep us focused on what's going on with the city and moving forward on our association. So, we do appreciate all that and all the help from everyone associated in those two, two entities, and, and we're looking forward to working with you in the future. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you for your hard work, too, and your main reason that association's doing so well.
So, everything, quick question. There are seven specific resolutions. Can we take them all at once, or do we need to do seven individual?
And if I knew how to, okay. I think it is perfectly fine if you make one motion to adopt all the resolutions at the same time.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
So, a motion to accept all the resolutions, A through G, is outlined in the agenda packet?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. And again, thank you, Mr. Boyd and staff, for getting us cheeky.
First budget. Woo-hoo.
Hey, you got six months before you got to start working on the next one.
No pressure.
Department reports, next item. Item 17 is 20th Anniversary Black Block Party Recap. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening.
So, do we have drone video of the concert and all that now?
No.
Okay.
You can go on the Facebook page, and you can see some pretty cool video-
Okay.
...and a ton of pictures. Great pictures.
Fair enough.
It was an awesome event. Awesome event.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dina Burhans. I am the Human Resource Associate with the city, and I'm here to recap our block party event that took place on June 3rd to celebrate our 20 years of cityhood. I'm grateful that I was able to part, to take part in this wonderful celebration. It was just so awesome to be a part of. We estimate that there was between about 7,000 to 8,000 guests that participated in this celebration. At our city hall, our mayor, Jeff Slowey, emceed and welcomed everyone and recognized the attending dignitaries. The Citrus Heights Police Department honor guard presented the colors, and we had two flyovers by the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department and the California Highway Patrol. Our national anthem was sung by Mesa Verde High School Choir, and... And then, we had performances by our Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, as well as a 50-male acapella group called The Voices of California. And that was just really amazing. Over 100 vendors and food trucks shared in our celebration. Our strolling entertainment included Star Wars characters, Disney princesses, a bookworm, as well as a steel walker and jugglers. They were enjoyed by participants of all ages. Our free kids zone also included face painting and a balloon artist, and several vendors provided free popcorn, snow cones, and cotton candy, and it wasn't just for the kids. Guests were able to see some awesome cars and the emergency vehicles on display. And I personally received several phone calls from prior to the event asking when and where they could get the tickets to go see Pablo Cruz. They were so excited. And they, along with our other band- And they, along with our other band, The Boys of Summer, were just a great hit. And some residents, they commented and said they, "Great band choices." They had a great time, and they were grateful for this free event. Of course, we couldn't have done it without our sponsors, and all in all, the event was a great success. We received a lot of positive feedback from the community, and some of the comments, I just wanted to reiterate some of them. It was just neat to hear. We hit it on the spot. A neat atmosphere. Citrus Heights was well represented. Love the shuttle service. Thank you so much for doing this, and I hope we can do it again and again.
Of course, it was free.
And you can all find these photos as well as other photos and the aerial on our Facebook page at Citrus Heights Block Party and/or on our city's website, citrusheights.net.
Great. And again, another thanks to the staff who did all the hard work. I mean, a lot, even though we hired an event planner, a lot of work went on behind the scenes. And the funny thing about this whole event, I've heard one complaint, and it was because we ran out of beer.
Oh.
And, you know, I mean, if that's the worst that it gets, I'm fine with that. We didn't need a bunch of drunken Citrus Heights people running around anyway, so.
I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, it was shared with the council, one of the, you know, a voicemail message that was left, and I think that man just, I mean, you could hear it in his voice, how much this meant to him on so many levels. And I think that really spoke about everybody's feeling. And the one thing I noticed is that everybody out there had a smile on their face. Everybody was having a good time. And no matter where they were and what they were focusing on during the event, you know, I didn't see anybody just walking around without a great big grin on their face. And I just think that it met the needs. It just hit, it hit the mark, you know? It just absolutely touched the heart and soul of our community, and so thank you so much for this. And I know, having worked with nonprofits for many years, when something goes off really well, everybody wants you to do it over and over and over again, and I just understand how that must feel right now. But thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks again, ladies.
Great presentation.
Well, Rhonda's working her way back to the city clerk, fill in. City manager items is the next item. Mr. Boyd, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Just briefly, with regard to the council's calendar for the months of August and September, it is traditionally, the council has not held a meeting, and the second meeting of August. However, this year in September, during the first meeting, so September fourteenth, it's in the middle of the League's annual conference, which is in Sacramento. So I would assume most, if not all of you, would be attending. As you know, there are a variety of business activities that occur in the evenings. So, you know, I would suggest and recommend that the council be available for those. So one recommendation to consider, and just maybe get some feedback from you, would be to actually have a second meeting in August and not have a first meeting in September to accommodate this year's situation.
Any concerns with that?
It's a great swap.
Yep, great swap.
Very good. That's what we'll do. Thank you.
All righty. Next item, Rhonda?
Next item is items requested by council member or future agenda items.
I have one thing.
Please.
As we've probably all heard, there is a strong effort in Washington, D.C. to eliminate CDBG funding. And I would like to suggest that we join four-hundred-and-thirty-some-odd mayors across the nation to appeal to the HUD Secretary and our president to reconsider that position and to give them an example of, let them know what we do with this funding, let them know that we are a fiscally responsible city, we don't irresponsibly use these funds, and the impact that will have if those funds are taken away from us.
Did it and done, because we talked about it a couple of meetings ago.
We did?
Yes.
Oh, I was hoping, yes.
But, you know, it was my bad for not forwarding you all the letter that Catherine prepared, so...
I didn't realize that we had formally taken action on that.
We talked about it a couple, the first time it came out, so...
There you go. So I'd like to see a copy of that letter, then.
Catherine, could you forward it out to... Thank you. Like I said, staff does a great job.
Okay. Thank you. And I have nothing further to request.
Anything else? The only thing I'd like to ask, and I do not want to report on it, but just an email follow-up. I think, you know, we're all aware of the heat and everything, and I'm glad city manager and staff opened up the cooling center at the community center. But when this, you know, ends, just curious if it was used. Again, not that we wouldn't do it again, but, you know, and, you know, not a formal report, just, you know, we had two people, we had no people. Again, we kind of need to know, you know, I would do it again, but then again, if it's not being used, then, you know, is there a different way to let folks know? So that's really where I'm going.
Chris, Mayor's General Services Department, we're averaging ten to twelve people a day.
Okay.
And most of them are Citrus Heights residents.
Good enough for me. So it's working somewhat. Thank you. You don't even skip that email, then. Anybody else? Is that it, Rhonda?
That is it.
All right, then we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.